Was Mr. Minkle ready? I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Dairy School Board. Today was the first day of school for most all of our students, besides those in sixth grade, and I heard everyone had a great day, so that is something to celebrate. Before we begin this meeting, I would like to just read one quick statement just about how the night is going to go, and then we will continue on. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I would like to discuss the protocol for this meeting to ensure the board is able to conduct its business and the public has a chance to be heard. We ask students to be respectful of each other, and I am asking the same of you tonight. Per RSA 91A, board meetings must be open to the public, but board meetings are mainly for the board to conduct the required business of running the district, with public comment available during delegations and individuals, after specific agenda items, or during a scheduled public hearing. Throughout this meeting, all speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Interruptions, heckling, booing, and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated when other people are speaking. People speaking out of order will be given one warning, and the second time it happens, I will ask the police at the back of the room to escort the person out of the meeting. During delegations and individuals, and when speaking to agenda items, you have three minutes each to speak according to policy B E D A D C. For each agenda item, public comment is limited to 30 minutes according to our policies unless extended by the board. You must give your name and dairy address for the record. If you use lewd or inappropriate language, the microphone will be cut, your time will end, and you will be asked to return to your seat. If you do not do so, I will ask the police to escort you out of the room. Please know that while board members listen to all public comments and questions, we are not authorized as individuals to make any decisions. All decisions must be made by the full board. For this reason, we will listen to all feedback, and if action is needed, take it after having a group discussion. Per school district protocol, masks are required in school buildings by all students, staff, and visitors while COVID community transmission is substantial. Right now, community transmission in dairy is very substantial, with 265 new cases per 100,000 dairy residents in the last 14 days. Substantial is defined as more than 100 cases per 100,000. Our current community caseload is higher than when we began school last fall. For this reason, masks are required of all people to be in the cafeteria. If you choose not to wear one, please proceed to the gym, where you can watch this meeting without a mask. A microphone has been set up outside the gym, so you can speak, while also seeing into the cafeteria, where the red, yellow, the red, yellow, and green timing system will be in view. I appreciate that you are all here and care deeply about your children's education. On that, we all agree. Let's also agree to follow the meeting rules, so everyone has a chance to speak and be heard. I hope all of your children enjoyed their first day of school and wish them a great year, filled with learning, connections, and growth, both socially and academically. Thank you. With that, we will move to the first order of business, which is VFW scholarship opportunities. Oh, sorry. First, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies. Now, we will move on to the first item of the agenda, which is the VFW scholarship opportunities. Mary Ann?
Jonathan, would you like to introduce the guest speaker, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So, we have Isaac here from the VFW, if you want to come step up. So, Isaac reached out to the board about some scholarship opportunities, both in the middle school and the high school grades. So, we just want to welcome Isaac here. Thank you for your service to both the community as well as the country. And without, we'll let you take over and kind of give us a little bit more information. And I will be passing out some of the papers that he gave to me to the rest of the board members.
Thank you all again. My name is Isaac Miller. I'm commander of VFW Post 1617 here in Dairy, also on the adjutant for Post 9 for the American Legion. So, to offer both opportunities for scholarship. First, I'll start with the Patriots Pen, which is the first page here for you. First, I guess who can enter? This is a patriotic essay for those in grades six, seventh, and eighth. With that, they write an essay of no less than 300 words and no more than 400 words about the topic. On the second page, it says, "How can I be a good American?" And that theme follows through for the entire year. It starts off at the post level, where it's graded, and those entries are due at the post level by October 31st. From there, goes to the post level, to the district level, to the state level, and then to the national level. Where at the national level, the national winner could win $5,000 in scholarship money, with also a paid opportunity to go to the National Convention next year to speak and read this essay in front of the entire National Convention in Kansas City, Missouri. Prizes up to that fact, at the post level, anywhere from $50 to $100 for the winner. District level, up to $200 or so. State level, up to $500. So, there are opportunities at each level for scholarship opportunities. And what we would like is a very competitive essay. So, to definitely guarantee our state, the state of New Hampshire, to win at the national level. Last year, in my post, we had no entries, and I'd like to improve that from the city of Dairy. Somehow, get these in front of the students and to their parents, where these can be a little more proactively pushed, I don't want to say pushed, or whatever. It's volunteer, like anything we do at the VFW, everything's volunteer. But with that voluntary effort, create a patriotic movement for these essays. And that's for the middle school system. Next, I have is the Voice of Democracy. And the Voice of Democracy, it's, the deadline's the same, prizes are a little higher in some fashion, whereas the national winner gets up to $21,000 or so. And with that, with that prize comes a little more competition. Not only do they write the essay, but they put this on a zip drive or a DVD, so that we can hear them speaking, and we judge the clarity of their, and the tone and the package that they're presenting to us, with all the knowledge and facts that they're presenting. The theme for the Voice of Democracy is, where do we go from here? Each year, these themes change at the national office. So, with these themes, it brings more competition back. Every year, with a more competitive essay. And again, it goes from the post level, to the district, to the state, to the national level, to be judged. And again, it follows that zip drive, or that DVD follows all the way through at each Now, with a change of hats, comes the American Legion. The next, the last essay I have for you is the Oratorical Contest. With the Oratorical Contest, again, what I did not mention for the Voice of Democracy is that it's grades nine through 12. Same thing with the Oratorical Contest, grades nine through 12. And yes, each year, the students can enter. There's the Patriots Pen, sixth, seventh, and eighth, the Voice of Democracy and Oratorical Contest, grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. With the Oratorical Contest, this is where they get to express themselves for 10 minutes in an oration, for any topic of the Constitution they would like. Speak for 10 minutes, no less than eight minutes, no greater than 10. At the end of that, when all, every contestant has spoken, done their 10-minute oration, then we have, on page two or three, we have the assigned topics on page, the back of page two. We have the assigned topics for 2022, those amendments. We choose out of a hat, there are four amendments there, we choose out of a hat which one they're going to speak on that day, in that contest. They only present it to the student and say, "You have five minutes now. Do you prepare your speech for this topic?" So, not only is there a 10-minute oration, what they'll do every contest, but then you have an element of surprise as to which one of the amendments they'll read for that day, and prepare a three- to five-minute speech on that topic. So, it's a two-part type contest. Very good for those who like competitive speech contests. Again, competition, competitiveness. The more competitors we have, the better person we can have and deliver from the state of New Hampshire. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate everything you do for us veterans.
We just don't have you disappear right away. I like the innovation that you're doing, and, you know, this district holds a Veterans' Breakfast every year, and I think some of what you're doing, the innovation of it, bringing more awareness to students, I think has been disappearing over the last couple of decades. So, I like the fact that your innovation in bringing this to students and having them express it and sink their head into what's going on in our world, and what service means to your country, I think is an ideal thing. I applaud you for it. Other organizations, like I know the Masons in different communities, they do a bicycle drive, where they have students read books to qualify for a raffle, to win a bicycle. And this seems to follow that same kind of path, and those are successful things. The only thing that stands out for me is that our high school students are a little bit removed from what we do here. I'm not sure how the idea, any ideas from the rest of the board, how to get that kind of interaction back in.
Lynn, I shared the contact that I have for other things to send to Pinkerton, and then it gets disseminated from there. So, I think that's probably already happened.
And thank you for your service. Thank you for being here. And we have had middle school students in the past represented through the Patriots' Pen Contest at both middle schools, and just the learning experience alone, regardless of whether their selection's been chosen to move on, the middle, you know, the experience that they have had, just performing and writing has been exemplary. And then those who've moved on have even had their greater achievement. But thank you for giving us the opportunity to do so and engaging our students, and we'll have this on our leadership agenda coming up next week.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's time.
Thank you very much for reaching out to us.
Thank you very much.
It is always great to start the first meeting, that's the first day of school, with opportunities for our students. So, with that high note, we will now move on to personnel.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I know some of you have heard these names. These are summer hires, so I am nominating the following individuals, and they certainly have started their work in the Dairy Cooperative School District, and we welcome them to each of their respective schools and to our Dairy Cooperative School District Learning Community. Renee Aruda, School District Nurse, Dairy Village Elementary School. Susan Byrne, Special Education Facilitator, Dairy Village Elementary School. Heather Galant, Music Teacher, South Range Elementary School. Kelsey Hurrell, School Counselor, South Range Elementary School. Carly Lynch, School Counselor, Grinnell Elementary School. And Melissa Nickerson, Teacher, Dairy Early Education Program, otherwise known as DEEP. And Michelle Stowey, Teacher, Dairy Early Education Program, otherwise known as DEEP.
Move to approve.
Second. A first by Brenda and a second by Derek. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And our next agenda item is policies.
Okay. We have four policies for second readings. JI, Students' Rights and Responsibilities. JIC, Student Conduct. And JICD, Student Conduct, Discipline, and Due Process Safe School Zone. I'll put those three together, because they all relate. Does anybody have questions on a second reading for those three policies?
Do any board members have any questions on those policies?
And then, the fourth policy is somewhere in here, KEC. Anyways, reconsideration of instructional material, and that is also for a second reading. Any questions on that?
Any questions? If not, thank you very much, Austin.
Yep.
Our next item is a donation from the Dairy Village Rotary-
Wait, we didn't vote.
Oh. Can I have a motion for those policies?
Motion to approve JI, JIC, JICD, and KEC as written.
It's KED. Oh, my apologies. It says KED on the agenda.
It is KEC.
Second. That was a first, a first by Jessica and a second by Derek. All in favor?
Jonathan had the second.
Oh, Jonathan had the second. My apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Austin.
Thank you.
The next item is the donation from the Dairy Village Rotary Club. Mary Ann?
Okay. The Dairy Village Rotary Club has done this before, and we are extremely appreciative of any donations that the school district receives. This one is particular to the Dairy Village Rotary Club. They are making a donation of $1,000 to our school district, which any donation over $500 needs to be approved by the board. So, the funds will be used to purchase library books that will be stored at the superintendent's office, and when there is a Rotary speaker at one of their meetings, the book will be signed by the speaker and returned to the district to be donated to one of our school libraries. This is a great program, and one that we certainly endorse, one that we appreciate, and certainly, as a district, are very grateful for. So, I ask that you accept this $1,000 donation from the Dairy Village Rotary Club.
Move to approve.
Second. A first by Brenda and a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We thank the Rotary Club for their generous donation. Our next item is the enrollment update. Mary Ann?
All right. This enrollment is very similar to the classes that we have been watching on an ongoing basis, really since about March and April. I call your attention to Ernest P. Barca, first, grade three, three sections of 22 and one section of 20. Let's fly. Sorry about that. And grade five, we have one section of 25, one of 23, one of 26, and one of 23. Again, some ask why those are imbalanced. That's because those classes were already made up, and some students, when they have withdrawn, or gone to other schools, or gone to homeschool, those are the sections in which students have been moved out. So, that's why the imbalance of numbers at this time. I draw your attention to Dairy Village Kindergarten. We have two sections at 18, one section at 16, and one at 15. Remember, if you recall, that Dairy Village is now the overflow for kindergarten. They have an overflow of South Range school students of six, Grinnell students of three. So, that is the overflow at this time. Dairy Village School, in grade three, we have two sections of 21 and one of 20. Grade four continues to be at least two schools, actually, three schools pointed out continuously across the board. We have two sections of 25 and one of 24 at Dairy Village. I move on to East Dairy Memorial Elementary School, grade four. We have been following this all along, three sections of 24. And grade five, two sections of 24, one of 25, and now, one of 23. And again, that imbalance occurs for the same reasons that I spoke and I referred to before. Grinnell Elementary School, kindergarten, three sections of 18. That is why the overflow is now going to. Dairy Village Elementary School, grade one, one section of 21, one section of 20, and one section of 19. And grade five, two sections at 25, and they have remained very stable with that number. South Range Elementary School, we have three sections of 18. As you know, we've been following that for quite a while, and sending any new students overflow to Dairy Village School, of which we now have six, according to the numbers that I have today. And grade four, which we have been watching for quite a while at South Range, two sections of 27. And remember, the school board recommended number for grade four is 25. And middle school remains about the same, as we had discussed before, a total of 555 students at Gilbert H. Hood, a total of 556 students at West Running Brook.
Does anyone have questions or thoughts on enrollment at this time?
I have a question. I noticed back in July till now, we've had 103 students added. That, in my recent memory, is a large bump over the summer that we haven't seen, and it makes me concerned for our Davis demographic numbers that we've been doing, and I wonder if because of this housing market that we've seen over the last year, if our Davis demographic numbers are going to be as accurate as they have been over the last decade that we've been using them. I know that we decided to not take the three-year plan of doing it every year. We thought that they've been fairly accurate, and I'm wondering if we should reconsider that in the future, going forward with the facilities plan and everything. More to the question, have we seen 100 students over the summer before?
Not to my knowledge. We did have a lot of students come back into the district from a boat, and so sometimes we consider that as that variable that we have not seen in the past. Jane, Lauren Woods has been in touch with you and me about a revisit to the district. Is that correct?
Yes, and Lauren's already been working with the town, getting, he gets any new developments, if they're going to be condos or homes. So, he's already been working with the town on our demographics. So, when we get that for this coming budget, he should have the most accurate numbers as possible. So, it's good we're doing an update for this year. Thanks.
Do we know how many homeschool students came back since last year? So, do we know how many, of this 103, do we know how many of them are students who chose to remain home or be homeschooled last year, as compared to this year?
So, how many homeschool students have returned?
Yes.
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can get it for you. And I'll have Mrs. Holtzman send that out.
Thanks.
Okay? Sure.
Historically, when we've started the year with larger class sizes, as the year has gone on, do we tend to lose students at the beginning of the year? Does it stay steady, or does it keep growing? Have there any been historical trends that we can look back on?
We could look at some historical trends. I think last year would not be a good year to make a comparative analysis because of the pandemic. We could look at some prior to that. Typically, we look and try to marginalize that effect after Labor Day, so the post-Labor Day, you know, surge, or, you know, we try to look at that and say, okay, after Labor Day, after the first of the month, does that, you know, plateau? And so, that's what we try to look at. Right now, we're still, you know, we have had our administrative assistants look through records and try to keep up on that, which they've done an admirable job on. However, looking at that and making sure that we have all the records, sometimes you rely on other sending districts, right, to say, okay, this, we need this student's records. We are really good on that. We pride ourselves on sending record requests as fast and as quickly and expeditiously as we get them. However, the receipt of those records sometimes gets stalled on the other end. So, that's where that, I would say, that variable kind of exists for us. But if you need the historical data, certainly, we can work on getting that in between, you know, the other things that we're doing.
So, that, I don't need it imminently. I ask that because I was trying to judge what, if you have any idea, what you expect to happen moving forward, whether you expect a progressive increase or whether a plateau?
I don't think we, you know, I don't think we expect a progressive increase right now. The decrease comes, we typically don't get a huge decrease either. Again, we're waiting for those record requests at some point. When I went, I can go into this later, but I went to schools today, and I went to a classroom that was supposed to have 26, and there were 25 students, and they had verified that that student moved. So, that's one, that's one concrete example that I can give you. So, they verified that minus one.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mary Ann about enrollment? If no one does, I think this is definitely something we need to keep a close eye on. It's great that so many people are interested in dairy and raising their kids here, but it definitely does mean we have to keep on our toes, making sure that we have places for everyone to be, so we can give them the education they deserve. So, we appreciate the update. We appreciate your update and your diligence in keeping up on this, and we will definitely keep following this in the next couple of weeks, as those records come through, and we know how they fall. So, if no one else has any questions on enrollment, the next item on our agenda relates to the Pinkerton Academy Construction Planning Committee meeting, and I'm going to pass this one to Lynn Perkins, who sits on that committee for ours, our board.
Great. Thank you, Erica. And whereas we're kind of in a different venue here as from the norm, let me just back up a little bit and explain how we get there. In our contract with Pinkerton Academy, anytime they do a capital expenditure of over $750,000, they have a planning committee, which is, which consists of different superintendent and different board members from each board. There's one board member from every sending district that attends, just to give input and to have some insight as to where they're going. And I was privileged enough to be appointed to go there. I think Derek had the last one before, when they purchased the Daly property, and we're looking at discussions about putting in the road off of Sunito Road. So, this time, I went and essentially, you have, the board members have a report of what has transpired over two meetings that went on. The first meeting, we did a tour of the building, the Shepherd Wing. Mary Ann was there with me, as well as the Social Studies Wing, which is the red building off of Pinkerton Street that extends out off of, from the rest of the building in towards the campus. They had a NIASC review, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, to keep their accreditation intact. And also, they have done a review of their facilities with La Valley Breßinger, which is what we've been doing here as well within our district. And what we're doing currently with that is to achieve an inventory of our facilities similar to what the municipal side of the town does. So, we got an opportunity to review the campus quickly with, in a presentation. So we, uh, we got an opportunity to review the campus quickly with, um, with, in a presentation. We also toured the Social Studies Wing, which is a dated building. It's, uh, was built in the seventies. It's on a foundation. It's a stick-built structure, um, as opposed to most of the brick-built structures that are on the campus there. And they pointed out some deficiencies in the building, um, that we could, could see. It's, it needs some upkeep. And that Social Studies building, as a matter of fact, they're projecting needs one point seven million dollars worth of repairs or maintenance to bring it up to, up to where it needs to be. In their synopsis, which they sent to us last, uh, two weeks ago, they simply depicted that they needed three, three and a half million dollars of repairs and kind of made the two pieces as one. The second piece is the one point eight million dollars to outfit and make, make more efficient of the Shepherd Building that's there, which was built in the, in the sixties. Under, so back, I think, uh, and on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty, we had, we had one of our sending town meetings and I, in their own minutes then, they had, I had asked the question, what their intentions with the Social Studies Wing would be, whether that, that they would be able to close it up because they were seeing a decreased enrollment on the campus. At that time, the response was, no, we will start to expand our special ed programs into the building. That was NECC, which is a program for autism, and also the ACT program and some of their five oh four planning. What they're looking at right now is essentially there, uh, there's a proposal to tear the Social Studies Wing down, which is a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot building, and convert it into a thirteen-hundred, uh, twelve-hundred-square-foot building. The projected cost on this is probably somewhere between nine and twelve million. There were numbers speculated around, bounced around, but nine was the minimum, and then it, some discussion took us up to about twelve million. You know, one of the, one of the things that were pointed out is, and, and I expressed my concerns about, um, long-term planning, which this board has continually asked Pinkerton about. We've asked to be involved in that. So we, uh, that again came to the forefront, um, owned, our own deficiencies here in the district that we wrestle with. I did speak about the example of losing parents in potholes down at Dairy Village School and how long it took us to acquire the money to be able to repave that. I don't want to say it's a, it's a whole feeling of all the trustees over there, but essentially the, uh, what, what I was told is our potholes are our problem and their, their construction costs are their, their problem. But I think as we continue to see an impact off of their decisions without, without our input into it and how it affects our budget, it, it becomes a more of a contentious issue. One of the justifications that they gave in order to continue the expenditures is essentially that they are the least expensive high school in the area. We've heard that a number of times. It's, um, it, it's like nails down a chalkboard for me. I, uh, three years ago, when we, at our deliberative session, we did an analysis there. Pinkerton does not have to do a Department of Ed twenty-five form, but they, um, but we do. And when you do that comparison, and we compared to London Dairy, they're actually only five hundred dollars less per student than where we're at. So when they have the free will to be able to just do construction and, um, and then just willy-nilly pass it on to all the sending towns, that gets to be a concern because of the expense, uh, the, the projection that they're significantly less expensive is, doesn't hold water, and we still have to pay the bill. I think, uh, wasn't three years ago, we probably saw a, a increase one year around five percent in, in certain categories on our budget sending to them. And not every year is like that. Sometimes it's modified. But either way, we have to continue to wrestle here with our budgets every year in order to be able to provide for them. And as we've pointed out before, if they send us the bill, and we need to try and keep our tax rate down, uh, we have to do more cutting here in the district in the K through eight level in order to keep our budget down and make sure that, uh, we pay our bill to Pinkerton. So those are some of the expressions and some of the oversight, or some of the overview. The chairman of the Auburn, um, board was rather vocal in saying, without a long-term master plan, without knowing what their plan is long-term, he will have a hard time getting his board members to support what their proposal is going to be. We'll probably hear what the price tag or what their final, uh, proposal's going to be sometime in November. I'm sure we'll get an opportunity to hear more about it, uh, speci-, you know, specific, one-to-one during our sending town meeting that we'll have in January or sometime before then, but we'll kind of keep our eye open and see what happens. And, uh, of course, this is a year, our, every five years, we negotiate our contract with Pinkerton. So these are significant things. They are proposing a drop or showing a drop in student population there. They're somewhere around thirty-three hundred people, students now thirty-two hundred. And they project in twenty-three, twenty-two to drop down, uh, somewhere around twenty-nine hundred students. I think when you understand where the mood of the state is, the state commissioner, and school diverse, school choice with students, um, I think that, you know, even regards to Pinkerton, uh, seeing options like that that could arise for our own students, I don't know how they stay consistent on their projections of students in, in twenty-two, twenty-three, with some uncertainty in the state budgeting going on. So anyway, that's the whole overview, and I appreciate, uh, I, I, I actually enjoyed going there. And even though there's difference of opinions, uh, we, we had a good dialogue for the most part. So there you go. Any questions from anyone?
Lynn, how, do you know how many classrooms they actually have in their other buildings?
I don't know in the other buildings. I know regards to the Social Studies Wing, they have nineteen teachers and thirteen classrooms there in that, in that one wing, but I don't know the total amount of classrooms throughout.
Okay. Um, and just to explain the tuition, the tuition number that they put out is regular education. They don't add in all the special education costs to that total, which brings it up significantly, um, to match the other public high schools who have to report differently. And not only high schools, elementary, middle schools as well.
Yeah, and that's where our DOE comes in, right? We, uh, we have to average the cost of our students regardless of the mix and what it is, but they can separate it out and they can market it and tell us that they're only thirteen thousand plus a year or some number around there. And then they can show how less, they can compare it to other high schools, and, and that shows quite a disparity in the tuition. But if, if they have to do the DOE twenty-five, they're right there at the, probably pretty close to where, maybe not where we're at, but certainly London Dairy, you know?
And just to piggyback-
I just wanted to ensure that people understood what the DOE twenty-five is. That's all.
I also just wanted to piggyback on what you said, Brenda, because the other thing that Pinkerton's average costs don't include is transportation, which is something public, other public schools would include, but we pay for the transportation for Pinkerton students.
Yeah, and just another point, you know, it, there's some accolades there in this regard, right? The, what they're proposing is for these, these students and, and I can see that there's some good attributes to what they're proposing and the whys, right? But, you know, in their synopsis, they paint the picture that there was a, a, you know, essentially a consensus that, yeah, it doesn't make sense to put one point seven million dollars into this building. They've already been remodeling some of the spaces in there to accommodate, um, the NEC students, right? They've been putting mini splits, or in case anybody doesn't know what those are, just wall-mounted air conditioners on the outside of the building to keep the classrooms clean, uh, cool. I think they've added a couple of bathrooms in there, right? So in the, in the first meeting, the consensus was, yeah, one point seven million dollars, doesn't make sense to throw good after bad. And, and part of the dialogue that was going on there was that if they did an improvement, they needed to get, they need to go a little bit bigger instead, you know, and, and look at that eighty-five percent occupancy so that they, average, so that they had some movement there. But and then, then in the second meeting, they disclosed that it's a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot building. They're going to spend ten million dollars to build a twelve-hundred-square-foot building. And at that point, you say, no, we're going to go back to the one point seven, because even if you add two million on to that, you can have a very nice stick-built building, and you don't need to tear it all down, and you don't need to spend all that extra money. And this is the check and balance that we always deal with here, right? So.
Lynn, do you know, was there any discussion, um, as far as, are they eligible for the state building aid fund at all?
Jane might be able to answer to that better, and not to put you on the spot here. I, I did talk with Jane about, uh, how we go about our building aid, right? And it's like a, a couple of year wait, and it's a, it's a, it's ask, and you might get some portion of that building aid for the public district, right? I don't believe that they have that requirement or anything like that. They just build what they build, and then they send the sending towns the bill and say, this is, this is it. So that's, if Jane feels comfortable elaborating any further, if you have anything to add, you certainly can, but I don't mean to put you on the spot, so.
It's okay. I don't think that they qualify for school building aid.
Okay.
So I think that their, their building process will be different than ours and the funding sources.
Okay. You know, we, we wrestle with what's the long-term plan, you know? This, you know, just as we're talking here, I get a chance to recall this. You know, when they purchased the Daly property, uh, the chairman of the Auburn Board was there at the committee and asked, okay, so you're buying this property, and there was some note of some of the excess building that was on the property, right? And, and he, and he said, you know, what are you going to do with that? And they said, well, we'll probably resell that and put it back onto the market. And, and then later on, I think at one of our sending town meetings, he asked the question again, and was just kind of, uh, the question was never really answered. You know, the Daly property had a house on it, and as chairman of the zoning board, uh, because I don't get enough abuse from serving on one board, right? That I wanted to sign up for two. But, uh, they had to come before the zoning board to, uh, put the ombudsman program into that, into that house. And so, you know, the, it's, it's one thing if you've got actually planned. I think Mr. Lutz has talked to me about what happens over it next and the, and the tight budgeting that you have to deal with. You deal with what you have, right? But if you, if you don't have that check and you're not worried about what your stakeholders, as they deem us, um, are having to go through, which, what, what the bill is never, never really has an issue, right? So we'll continue to work with them and see what we can, if we can convince them to, when they come out with a proposal, what, what kind of plan they might modify.
Lynn, could you remind us again of when the next meeting is and what their process will be for deciding and what would happen in terms of anything being put out?
Yeah, so, you know, they, they did a press release this week about the, about their doing it, what the NEASC plan was. And, and I found that some of the press release, similar to the, the synopsis they sent, didn't really paint the, the best picture, right? But, uh, at this point, our meetings are suspended. They're going to get a proposal together of what they think is the best option, as in their contract specifies, their trustees hold the ultimate decision regardless of what the sending districts, um, say in it, you know? But the follow-up will be sometime in November. They expect to have a, a final number and where they're going. And like I said, we'll probably hear about it at least by the January sending town meeting, so. Paul?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm a little, actually, I'm somewhat out in the area. I don't understand where, and I think that you touched upon the fact that you were in the same position with the, um, the two buildings and the, the difference in the square footage, which may make sense if they had a specific plan and purpose down the road. I know the Social Studies Wing was called the Social Studies Wing, but that's been, as we might expect, used for other things. So it's not just social studies. But, um, you know, I, I look at the, the difference in price or the difference in cost between those two, and you're spending a lot more money to get a lot less square footage.
Yeah.
And, um, which there again, depending upon what their overall long-term plan is, may make sense. So is there any, my question, I guess, is that, is there any indication that prior to them making a decision, they're going to reveal this is our long-term plan with this?
Well, again, that's what the chairman from the Auburn District asked for. I, I had to say on a personal level, I, I, uh, kudos to him. Uh, I agreed, but of course, I, I can't speak for everybody here on the board. But, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, the, the Chester Board, the Hampstead Board, and the Hooksett Board all sent people in their first year on, on a board, on the board, right? So they're kind of watching, a little puzzled at the dialogue that's going on. It wasn't heated, but it was, um, it was, there was a precisness to what we were trying to get across. And I think that one of the things that we deal with is that when you get a turnover, new board members, right, nots, whatnot, some of this gets lost, and people don't always follow it along. So, um, we'll hope that, that we can get some idea on the long-term plan there in order to, if they're going to go ahead and tear down this one building to put in a smaller building, uh, that they're going to try and sell us on, on the long-term plan, and this is where we're going, and we promise just one more building, and then we won't go anymore. But, you know, who knows, you know? Well, anyway, uh, thank you all for, uh, your ear on this, and, uh, we'll see what happens in November, December. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you very much for that update, Lynn. As everyone knows, since we tuition our students to Pinkerton, the decisions Pinkerton makes have a large impact on our budget, so it's great that we have someone keeping, we have someone keeping up and our entire high school committee working on our next contract to keep up on what's going on there. So our next item tonight is the superintendent's update.
Okay, good evening again. As we know, the start of the school year, of the new school year began today. We had some students in yesterday for the meet and greet and our new kindergarten students. Today, I've visited five schools. Gilbert Hood, Deep, Grinnell, Dairy Village, and Ernest P. Barca. Tomorrow, I'm scheduled to visit West Running Brook, East Dairy, and South Range. I can't say enough about our, and the energy of our students and staff. The student, our students certainly seemed happy to be back in school. I was invited to the Grinnell Playground, and I went there and, um, engaged with students and walking around. They had stories to tell. Some students were engaged in work. Mr. Leveque, I saw you outside with your students and inside, so I saw you in dual environments. Um, Ms. Mrs. Carey, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Stop, actually, I saw, I didn't see you today, so maybe I'll have to stop by and see you tomorrow. And it was just great to see everyone back today, and, um, as I said, energized, and the environment was great. So our teachers and staff have been onsite since Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, preparing classrooms and for instruction, as well as participating in professional development. We're excited and optimistic about the return to in-person learning for all students. And as I said, I really can't say enough about our staff and, and how they've engaged students, and we're ready and prepared for everything today. And, um, that really is a true testament to the commitment and professionalism of all our staff. And our, as I said, our students and families are really well-prepared, so thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge two extremely talented and amazing West Running Brook Middle School eighth-grade students, Sarah Hull and Charlotte Dugan, for their performances at the Dairy School District Staff Opening Day on Thursday, August twenty-sixth, held at Pinkerton Academy Stockbridge Theater. We have an opening day for staff, um, every year, except last year, and we had that all remote. Charlotte and Sarah led the Pledge of Allegiance. They sang the National Anthem together, followed by the song "Kana Mi" by Bruno Mars. Their poised talent and preparation were incredible. We know that we'll be seeing and hearing much more from Sarah and Charlotte throughout this year and throughout many years to come. Special thanks to our students and families who took time to create and share video segments and the director of media, David Minkel, that they assembled for opening day. In fact, one of the students who assembled a video for us, I was able to meet and thank him personally today. The question that students were asked was, how were your teachers and other adults in your school there for you during the last school year? The responses were heartwarming and genuine. Again, thank you to our students, families, and administrators for making the video possible. At the staff reopening day, longevity was also celebrated, recognizing the numerous years of service reached by the Dairy Cooperative School District staff. Congratulations and our most sincere appreciation to the following staff who have reached the monumental goal of thirty years. From East Dairy Memorial Elementary School, Renee Hall, and from the SAU office, Lisa Long. Twenty years from Dairy Village Elementary School, Helen Casey. From East Dairy Memorial Elementary School, Stacy Campbell, Nicole Clark, Christine Fulton, Laura Gold, Lauren Goldsmith, Jennifer Lowe, Jody Stoa. From East Bar, from Ernest P. Barca Elementary School, Laura Endress, Doug Faust, Allison Gorman, Jennifer Lynch, Sarah Milos, Erin Raca. From Gilbert Hood Middle School, Diana Lang, Maureen Lynch, and Jolene McGorder. From Grinnell Elementary- From Grinnell Elementary School, Heidi Shelby. From South Range Elementary School, Taylor Amsler, Jaclyn Harrison, and Jennifer Stump. From West Running Brook Elementary School, Suzanne Breyers-Carr, Joe Brunz, Jennifer Chiara, Stephanie Duxbury, Justin Krieger. And I don't want to miss anyone. And from the SAU office, Maureen Giordani and Susan Hebert. And at the same reopening meeting, recognition was also extended to several of our district-wide departments. And at most meetings, as I would say, at all the reopening meetings lately, much recognition is given to our district-wide departments, who seldom really get the recognition that they truly deserve. So one of the most versatile departments, that of our maintenance department, is led by Director of Facilities, Jeremy LaMoth. Our maintenance and custodial staff work incredibly hard to make every school look amazing. And there was no, there was no more evidence than that of today, as I was walking around each of the five schools and the remaining three tomorrow. The detail they give to cleaning protocols is outstanding regardless of their request. The pride that Dairy takes in maintaining its facilities makes us, as far as I'm concerned, the best in the state. The technology department is led by Director of Information Services, Dr. Clifton Dancy, who's sitting over there, who is also the district's transportation coordinator. You'll hear from Dr. Dancy later on. Their attention to detail continues to meet student and staff technology needs in a timely way and the, and the entire department is amazing, always goes out of their way with a smile to help anyone. Our food service department is led by new Director of Food Service, Christina LeBelzak. The food service department is second to none, which is, was exemplified on a daily basis last year, when our students never missed a meal regardless of which educational model we were in. And despite any weather conditions, the food service team's enthusiasm is certainly contagious. And the finance department, under the direction of Business Administrator Jane Samar, and she doesn't know I'm going to say this, continues to work tirelessly between three budget years and with auditors to provide documentation and meet extensive requests and regulations. Their precision and collaboration are greatly appreciated. So thank you, Jane. Kathy Kennedy, our Director of Human Resources, leads an extremely active and busy department throughout the year to fulfill requests and requirements for contracts and hiring. Their work is very much appreciated as we begin school and continue searching for employees in a very competitive market. And I think that's true for all of us. We're in a real competitive job market and we still have several vacancies. So please search our website and you can find those vacancies right in our website. Special recognition is extended to our nursing team, led by Team Leader Susan Linehan, the South Range School Nurse. Through the long days and weekends during the 2020-21 school year, they deserve an abundance of thanks for their communication and implementation of the ever-changing healthcare guidelines. The nursing team, along with our secretarial and administrative assistant staff, have a special way of welcoming students and families, making those important connections between school and family that often last a lifetime. Thank you to both teams for their big hearts. Next, our recognition is extended to our entire staff who continue to collectively focus on our critical purpose, that of connecting with students and families and keeping students safe. In doing so, they foster students' social, emotional, academic, and physical growth while recognizing and addressing areas that require attention and intervention. The entire district staff deserves thanks for their flexibility, patience, and willingness to learn, adapt, and persevere through even the most unpredictable of times. Finally, I'd like to recognize the school-based administrators and the entire district leadership team with whom I work each day for their relentless work, unwavering commitment, continuous focus on students, staff, and families, and their eternal optimism. There will be a special election to fill the, the vacated Dairy State Representative seat. The first election will be a primary held on Tuesday, October 19th, and the special election will be held on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Voting will take place in the West Running Brook Middle School Gymnasium. You are certain to hear more about these, but I did want to point that out to the public since it will be using West Running Brook and it's important for us to point that out to the public. Next is a brief overview of the West Running Brook Field Update. Principal Justin Krieger, Maintenance Manager Rob Sporito, and I met with members of the Public Works Department on Friday, specifically Director of Public Works, Mike Fowler, Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Walsh, and Engineering Coordinator, Mark LaRue, to discuss the West Running Brook Middle School Field Project. The project's scheduled to be presented to the Town Council on September 21st and if approved, to the School Board at an October meeting. So please stay tuned for further updates on the West Running Brook Middle School Field Project. It's extensive. Our Department of Public Works has done an outstanding job keeping us updated and I look forward to them presenting at a board meeting. I think you will too. And they have just been incredible and I can't say enough about the collaboration that we have with Dairy Police, Dairy Fire, and our town in general. So thank you. The 2021-2022 School District Reopening Plan continues to be updated, as you've probably seen our several updates on our website. The updated plan is posted on the district website with a revised date and archive versions are maintained on our website. Revisions to the plan will be summarized at school board meetings, as they were during the 2020-21 during school year, by Dr. Garafalo and his Assistant Superintendent Reports. And lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that in observance of Labor Day, there will be no school from Friday, September 3rd through Monday, September 6th. This is a four-day weekend for all students that I believe they will really enjoy. On a side note, as I went through classrooms today, particularly the middle school, I reminded them that although they were up earlier than they usually have been this summer, that they were getting a four-day weekend. And I, on a sideline note, I reminded them they would not always be getting a four-day weekend. They were happy with the first four-day weekend that they were getting. So thank you for all of your support and students, keep up the great work. Any questions?
Has there been any discussion about that, the special election primary or voting day where West Running Brook might be remote? Or are we planning on having the students in while the voting happens?
We did not discuss anything about West Running Brook being remote. No, we, Justin and I have spoken. The first day, we plan on having, hopefully, weather permitting, in October, we can have physical education classes outside. So because, you know, using our gym, the second day will certainly present a challenge because in December typically we can't have physio classes outside unless they're doing something like snowshoeing. So we haven't gotten to the second day yet and we did not discuss remote, but.
I was just wondering, because I know that there's been complaints from the citizens in the past about parking at our middle schools during those and I just didn't know if it had come up with anyone.
We didn't discuss that yet.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing it up. Does anyone else have any questions for Mary Ann? If not, we will move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Update.
Okay, before I update the roadmap, I got some information on homeschooling and virtual learning academy, V-Lax. Kathleen Holzman, the Superintendent's Administrative Assistant, is responsible for homeschool students. And our Director of Literacy, Dr. Sarah Taylor, is responsible for students who take any virtual learning academy or V-Lax courses. Both of them wanted me to reach out to everyone with the following message. If your child will not be attending school in person but will be taking one or more V-Lax courses, you do not have to unenroll your child from their homeschool and the district. We have a partnership with V-Lax that allows us to keep your child in our system as a student and their progress is monitored by Dr. Sarah Taylor through the V-Lax Student Information System. If you have any questions about that whatsoever, please call the SAU office to speak with Dr. Taylor. If she's not there, you could check in with Ms. Holzman, 432-1210. Thank you. So, updates to the Dairy Cooperative School District reopening plan roadmap to 2021-2022 school year. Next year will have a longer title than that, I'm sure. Page four. The heading is 2021-2022 Plan Overview. It's in the, the green section and it's the first section that says completely open onsite. The fourth bullet has been changed to read as accommodations for medically compromised students will be determined through the 504 IEP process and/or through the eligibility determination for face covering exemption form, see Appendix B. So talking about the appendix, in the table of contents, it used to just have face covering decision matrix. Now that's one of four, so that's been labeled Appendix A. And then Appendix B is community transition metrics. Appendix C is the Dairy Cooperative School District eligibility determination for face covering exemption. And Appendix D is the heat index. Those are the newest updates. I will bring more updates to these meetings as we move along and as we continually update the roadmap. From a curriculum standpoint, we are currently working on updates to the district website and I will be reporting on this when it is completed, hopefully by the end of September. For my next report, I will also report on the summer learning plan and the content area committee work that took place this summer. Other things have been taking up my time, so I will make sure I get that into my next report. Questions? Thank you.
If there are no questions for Austin, we will move on. Thank you, Austin, for that update and keeping on track of your opening plan and constantly letting us know what changes so that we can let others know. We will now move on to the Business Administrator's Update.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give you a maintenance update that Jeremy LaMoth prepared. The last meeting, we talked about the parking lot line striping was going to be completed, which it's now done at Dairy Village, West Running Brook, and South Range. So the parking lot pavement project is completely done. Fire sprinkler inspections are 90% complete, so they'll be finishing those shortly. The East Derry water, as well as the Grinnell water, is still an ongoing process. They're hoping to begin some installation in four to five weeks. And we're also looking at a funding source through the, through the state, through a grant. And Jeremy's been working with the town and Penachuk Water, moving forward with that project and using the town bid rates for the contractor for that project. We also completed some last-minute flooring that had to get replaced at Grinnell. We also have been replacing emergency backup lighting, so that's in progress throughout the district. They have been keeping up with all of their school maintenance requests, which we've had quite a few this year, but the maintenance team's doing an outstanding job. We did have an HVAC contractor work on inspections of the ventilation systems operations and some minor repairs have been made. Both Jeremy and myself also met with Honeywell and to work on a project for any HVAC upgrades through ESER funding. So we're going to put together a presentation to do, present to the Building and Grounds Committee or Maintenance Committee and then Honeywell is happy to come and do a presentation before the board. What they're looking at is any outstanding projects that weren't completed in the first, the first two phases of Honeywell, that those would be eligible for ESER funding projects. And they would be considered construction. So if you're going to do any air handling units or anything like that, the federal project is considering that construction. So there's a, a lot more of a process to do that and to do a construction project. So we are going to want to start bringing that forward to the board because Honeywell did tell us that most of their installations, because equipment is at least 22 weeks out. So we need to start on those projects. So if the board wanted to move forward with that, at least you would be starting at this time of the year. The last thing for maintenance is we are still short several custodians, so there are positions open there and that would be for the two to 10 shift. And I think we have three or four openings in that area. And to talk a little bit about finance, as you mentioned, the Davis demographics, I've been working with Lauren and he's been keeping me updated on the progress of his work and what he's been doing with the town. So I feel confident we'll have an updated report for the, for the budget meeting. We're also working on the district overview presentation that will be on Monday, September 13th. That is a public meeting here at West Running Brook. And also working on the 22-23 budget presentation for Monday, October 18th. And like Mary Ann said, our entire finance department is working, we have auditors in our office this week and they are auditing the 2021 school year. And of course, we're still managing the finances for 21-22 and going into budgeting for 22-23. When I met with the auditors today, they're probably going to do a single audit on federal. They may do a single audit on our food service due to the amount of revenues. And there were a lot of errors, actually, he was at my desk for about two and a half hours today, and they were doing, every year, you never know what the assessment's going to be or what they're looking at. So quite a few things changed in what they're looking at from last year, so I will bring those forward to the board once we've completed our audit. But so far, it's going really well and thank you and big kudos to the finance department for all their hard work and, and doing such a great job of keeping accurate bookkeeping and finances for the district. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Jane? If not, thank you, Jane, for that update. And do, we look forward to hearing what you come up with with HVAC, because just so people know, we have, we will have access to many ESER funds, but they have to be spent on specific things and HVAC are projects that can be quite costly but quite helpful. So with that, we will move on to the technology update from Dr. Dancy.
Good evening and here's my technology dog and pony show, so to speak. Over the summer, we were quite busy. This year, we did not have a slow boat across the Pacific holding up our devices. We were able to order our 500 Chromebooks to replace those, the BYOD Chromebooks, and they arrived a week after our order and we processed them and now they are in student hands. Our people have been helping the buildings get them into the student hands today and they will continue throughout the week, making sure that all of our students have a Chromebook to be able to take home. We also ordered and processed 300 touchscreen Chromebooks for kindergarten. They are in carts and will be in each kindergarten classroom to be taken home only when absolutely necessary, if we ever need an inclement remote, weather remote learning day. Part of the process this summer was creating a new inventory system. Well, as we were receiving all of our Chromebooks throughout the past couple of years, it was a real get them in, process them and get them out really quick. And we did our best to get an inventory system, but it was less than perfect. So this year, we invested into barcode tags, which we've applied to all of our devices, and a new inventory system that ties into Power School so we can monitor who has what in Power School with each student. So that's going to be a big plus, a big help for us. On the infrastructure, our firewall content filtering, that, our firewall project that we had, that we didn't, we used ESER funds for that. We completed the district-wide firewall replacement with a new device at Gilbert Hood and another one at East Dairy School. Core Protect was our service for the past 20 years and I'll talk about that in just a moment. We replaced it with a Fortinet Firewall. We also are ordering a new firewall for the SAU as well and some new extreme access points to put them on the network with everybody else. The reason why we're doing another firewall for the SAU is so that we can have internet failover at the SAU. We have two sources of internet at the SAU and they will both plug into this firewall and if one goes down, the other one automatically takes over. We think that it's really important that that building be constantly connected with the internet. We replaced our online content filtering system for our Chromebooks, which was called Go Guardian, with another product called Securely. It was less expensive and it also provides a parent component that allows parents to increase their filtering for their students if they so wish. So if they want to turn off YouTube at night whenever the kids are at home, they can do that. That, it gives parents a lot more freedom. They cannot, they can't go less than what we have in our school filters, but they can certainly add more to it. And the reason why we filter, remember, is that these, we are an E-rate district and we have to show evidence of filtering all of our internet access that we provide. And since these are school-owned devices at home, we filter them as well. So back to Core Protect, I'd like to take this moment to congratulate Larry McCall. He was our Core Protect engineer for the last, well, at least 20 years. In fact, I don't think anybody knows exactly. In fact, I don't think anybody knows exactly how long Larry was with the district. But Larry was a veteran of the Vietnam War and learned all of his coding and device-making during his time in the service, and he built a firewall for Dairy that was probably as good as anything at Fort Knox. It was very, well, I asked Tracy today, there were no known data breaches in the Dairy Cooperative School District network all the time that Larry was here. One of the things he always told me was that you can't be working when you love your job as much as I do. So, he just loves getting up every day, and this man is up at 3:00 in the morning. He was monitoring our network and making sure things were going right. And so, on July 23rd, we had a retirement celebration for Larry, and I thought I would show you the picture because many times, like the Wizard of Oz, he was the man behind the curtain that very few people actually ever got to meet. He developed a very strong relationship with Tracy Graham, our network administrator, and they were close friends throughout the 20 years that he served with the Dairy Cooperative School District. So, I just wanted to make that public here at the board meeting, all of our appreciation. He was a contracted service. He wasn't an employee of the district, but I sent him out like he was an employee of the district because we appreciated him so much. So, that's it on the technology side of what we've been doing this summer. Just briefly, I'll touch on my other hat. It seems that I enjoy these jobs that you don't notice them until they go wrong, you know, and then everybody's pointing at you and saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" And then I get to be the person to try to figure out or delegate who's going to correct it. And transportation is another one of those areas that you don't really notice it when it's going really well, and it's just when that bus doesn't show up at your home, or that bus doesn't show up at the school or whatever, that you notice things happen. I do know that I, this is my 31st year in public education, and I have never been in a first day of school where transportation was perfect. It's just kind of a given, there's going to be some glitches and ups and downs, and we did experience some of those today. Our people were right on those areas. I have developed a really good relationship with Chandra and with Lisa and Kathy in the office there. And if you've called into First Student, sometimes you've been directed to a voicemail. It's not because they are not answering the phone, it's because they are answering the phone, and they are on the phone all day long. I have been in that office for many hours and watched that phone ring, and they answer with kindness, and they're very helpful in getting the answers to parents when they need them. We still are working on some of the requests through the form. I encourage people to continue to use the form to get the answers that you need. Also, people have been emailing me and calling me, and that's okay, and I've been working hard to answer those questions as well. I will encourage the citizens of Dairy to be mindful of school buses, and please remember that stop sign is a legal stop sign, and you should never pass a school bus. I have many reports from parents that we have dangerous roads here in Dairy. Don't ever go down Island Pond Road because it's a dangerous road, or some of these other roads. If, you know, our school buses can only do so much, and we can, we will try to make the safest stops that we possibly can, but it also takes the cooperation of all of our citizens too, driving safely on the road, to make it a safe experience for our kids. With that, I'll kind of stop talking, unless you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? We thank you both for your update on technology and transportation. Both of those are critical areas, and we appreciate you staying on top of them.
Thank you.
Our next item is FYI. I just have one item, just so the public knows. On Monday, September 13th, it is our first budget meeting, but it's not a budget meeting, it's really a district overview. So, if people want to learn more about our district, that is a public meeting, and you are welcome to come and learn more about the district, and that will be 6:30 here at West Runningburg. Does anyone else have any FYIs? If not, we will move on to committees. John?
Lynn, I'm giving you a break tonight.
Thank you.
I move to approve the manifest grand total of 1.97, sorry, $1,972,866.67, of which general payroll is $1,226,165.2, and general expense in the amount of $746,701.65.
Well, seeing as I've already acknowledged those manifests, I will second that with enthusiasm.
So, a first from John and a second from Lynn, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Do any, do any board members have any other committee updates they'd like to give at this time? Just so, the high school committee did give an update of sorts earlier as an agenda item, so if no one does. Our next item is delegations and individuals. I'd just like to remind people of what I said earlier, most importantly, that any interruptions, heckling, booing, or inappropriate comments will not be tolerated, that people speaking out of order will be given one warning, and the second time it happens, I will ask police from outside in the hall to escort the person out of the meeting. I would also like to remind you, each person does get three minutes, and that we do have a timer system, so whether you're in this room or in the gym, you can see that timer system, and you will know when you are running short on time and when you are out. We ask that you give your name and address for the record. And we also want to remind people that per school district protocol, those in this room do need to wear masks to be in this room. Also, because we do have people in two different rooms to make the meeting go most smoothly, I'm going to ask that we alternate, so one person can come up and speak from the cafeteria, and after that, I will call and ask for someone to come up and speak from, oh, there's no one in there? Okay, so there's no one in the gym, so it's just in this room. So, I just ask that you each take your three minutes, and we will give you each your three minutes, so you don't have to fight your way to the microphone, and just give your name and address, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you. Richard?
Good evening. My name is Richard Tripp. I live at 44 Wyndham Road. The last meeting, I asked some questions about the policy update. And me now, I don't think that quickly. I was thinking about the board and the administration's response to my question, and I thought that, that's an awful odd response. You know, it's one of those things that if the only way you can find out about what material is being used for the curriculum is to have a child in school, that seems to be a little exclusive. Well, actually, it seems to be a lot exclusive, because if we're going to follow that type of logic, then the only people that would be involved on a school board would be people that have children in school. The only people that are going to vote in elections would be people that have children in school, you know? So, I was a little taken aback when they said that, well, they, Austin, said that they don't have a list of the material that's used to teach. And I thought, why not? You know, it would seem that if someone should be in charge of the curriculum. And being a curious person, I went on the New Hampshire School Association website and found out that the superintendent's in charge of that. Is that correct?
We have an assistant superintendent who's in charge of curriculum, but I also pardon, or designee.
Yes, so.
It's not that I don't work with curriculum, but I have to designate some things, absolutely.
Well, the point I was trying to make is I was asking the wrong people when I was asking the board. I should have been asking the school administration, you know. The board makes a policy of being able to contest the material used, being used for curriculum, but then the administration has to execute that policy. And I still wonder why it is that someone that isn't directly involved with the schools, i.e., has a child in the school, does not have access to the information that's being used to teach the curriculum. And you don't have to answer it now, but I would like an answer, you know, maybe at the next school board meeting, because you guys do a good job of presenting how the school is being administered and the policies are being, you know.
Richard, can you wrap up your thoughts? Your, the timer has gone off.
You're lucky, well, actually, I'm lucky that I'm done. Thank you very much for
Thank you.
Having me speak.
Good evening. As some of you already know, my name is Darlene. Dupuy, I live on Island Pond Road, most dangerous road in the town, as talked about earlier. I want to thank you guys for your time, and I want to start by asking everyone on the board an honest question, if I could please receive an honest answer. And I'd like to know if we can all agree that masking and COVID guidelines has been rather stressful for our students, most importantly, the elementary-age students. That's the only level of school that I have a child in. I don't know if anybody cares to answer that.
I think normal protocol is just to hear the three minutes, Chair, and
Okay. All right, I can respect that. So, I have, you've heard in testimonies from the other parents, both this year and this present, yes, last year, excuse me, and the CDC offers an article about the effects of childhood stress on health across the lifespan. I brought it tonight, and I felt that since we like to use the CDC on our guidance, I'd like you to please consider this article and some of the quotes I'll give you from it, because of the concerns I really have as a parent here in this town. Maybe we could try to come to an understanding of each other better on the concerns of many parents, and maybe we can find some common ground. What I'm asking is that you reconsider some of the guidelines in place with the masks. Maybe we could meet halfway. I could totally reason with seeing kids wearing masks, I've mentioned this to you before, in a high-traffic, high-volume area such as in our common hallways. But what I'm asking is that we give our youngest children, at least, the opportunity to take their mask down when they're trying to learn at their desks. I'm having a really hard time with the tears in my home, and I'm losing a lot of sleep. I'd like to let you know that the stress involved with kids and their masks would be considered and categorized as toxic stress. There are three levels of stress. There is positive stress, there is tolerable stress, and then there's toxic stress. Toxic stress is an intense adverse experience that may be sustained over a long period of time, weeks, months, or even years. Children are unable to effectively manage this type of stress by themselves. As a result, the stress response system gets activated for a prolonged amount of time. This can lead to permanent changes in the development of their brain. This is directly from the CDC. Toxic stress can impair the connection of brain circuits, and in the extreme, can result in development of a smaller brain. Brain circuits are especially vulnerable as they're developing during early childhood. Toxic stress can disrupt the development of these circuits. This can cause an individual to develop
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
That felt like the shortest three minutes compared to the person before me.
It's the same timer.
Okay.
Can I have her sit with me so she can be my speaker?
I have never felt like, like you guys don't care. I'm bringing you really valuable information. I don't need you. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I want to feel like you care. I'm coming to you with facts.
She's a medical professional.
Ma'am, please wait till it's your turn. This is your first warning.
Please don't, please don't do that. I just want you guys to care.
We are listening.
I have real facts, and all I'm asking is for you to reconsider some things.
My name is Butch Temby, Bowers Road. Last meeting was very interesting, very passionate, but also very concerning. We had numerous members of this board ask multiple questions of Dr. Peterson, but when we had a registered nurse and a gentleman with a PhD in science, not a single one of you engaged in any type of discussion. I understand that we have our three minutes, but after that, you could have easily asked follow-up questions, or asked them to come back up to ask follow-up questions. You talk about exhausting every avenue in order to make your decisions. You didn't exhaust those avenues. You just denied another avenue. Very, very interesting and concerning. We had a board member speak out against parents who raised their hands to signify that they were intending on pulling their children from the district, telling us that we would not be able to find the same value as the Dairy School District provides. What you should have said was that even though you disagree with what we were deciding, the board and the SAU would still be there to support us and our children. But you chose, instead of supporting, you chose to chastise us. You know, for anyone that's contemplating taking their children outside of the Dairy School System, there are so many successful options out there for you in a massive, and I mean massive, support group. And we did just that the very next day after this meeting. We found those support groups, and we made the best decision we've ever made by pulling our child from this district. We had a chair overreact to a simple clapping every time that the majority of the people in attendance clapped in support of one speaker when they were done. Nowhere in the document you released prior to the meeting does it state that clapping was prohibited, yet every single time we clapped, you interrupted it. Okay? We weren't clapping to be unruly, we were clapping in support, because that was our way of being heard. How would you know if we supported what was being set up here if we sat on our hands? But maybe that was your agenda the whole time, Erica. Okay? Control the parents, control the narrative. We, all we asked for was the ability to choose what's best for our own children, maybe become some kind of compromise. You had the opportunity to do that, but you chose to prohibit parent choice. You decided that parents do not know what's the best for their children, and that decision is going to become very costly to each and every one of you, because I look forward to being part of a movement that takes back our schools, it takes back our school board, by removing each and every single one of you from those seats when your terms end.
Chair, if I could just make a note of strategic empathy for those speaking, and I think some people can remember, six, seven years ago, I'd sit out there and I would address the board, and sometimes it seemed like it went on forever, and other times it was short. So, sometimes it's not protocol for the board to get into a back-and-forth during the three minutes that people have to speak. I think that's just kind of a reminder. And, you know, to that point, our first speaker, you know, lost some time to asking the board questions, and so sharing this protocol helps expedite their expectations. And again, this is strategic empathy. I get it. I think all of the board, and being the no vote on that motion, I think all of the board is always interested in hearing the point of view of parents. So, try and make your points concise, make them strategic points, but don't get into too much of the name-calling. You probably find you'll get enough time to make your point, so thank you.
Ma'am, it's your turn.
Hi, thank you. My name is Alina Waymoth. I live on 10 Bowers Road, and I'd like to address the board about some of its codes for a moment, starting under the school board member ethics, number 11. Preserve the obligation of having controversial issues presented fairly and without bias. Mass choice is very controversial, and it has not been presented fairly, and it has not been presented without bias. Under community involvement in decision-making, it states, "The school board endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the schools is essential in the school system, and the community are to maintain mutual confidence and respect and work together to improve the quality of education for students. It therefore intends to exert every effort to identify the desires of the community and to be responsive through its actions to those desires. Residents who are especially qualified because of interest, training, experience, or personal characteristics will be encouraged to assume an active role characteristics will, will be encouraged to assume an active role in school affairs. From time to time, such persons may be invited by the school board to act as advisors, either individually or in groups." In light of the school board's community involvement in decision-making and the violated code of ethics number 11, I'd like to recommend the school board invite Dr. Michael Leon of Derry to act as an individual advisor to the Derry School Board. Dr. Michael Leon began his study at the Scripps Research Institute in 1987, earned a Bachelor of Science from Azusa Pacific University in 1994. There, he majored in chemistry, tutoring others in general chemistry, physical chemistry, and organic chemistry. He taught organic chem lab and was a supplemental instructor for major biology. Dr. Leon continued as a lab tech at the Scripps Research Institute before heading to Dartmouth to earn his PhD in pharmacology and toxicology. He also completed a postdoctoral fellowship, fellowship before joining the biotech industry, where today he works to develop medicine for cancer patients. I can happily provide you with Dr. Leon's email. He is looking forward to hearing the approval of you. And I can give that email to you right now if you'd like. Right, thank you.
Your name again, please.
It's on, it's on this paperwork here, with my email as well.
Justin Dolores Ave. I'm here to encourage the board to reconsider the reopening policy and make masks optional. If I were on the board with you, here's my thoughts that I'd convey to you. First, does the board have legal authority to impose minors without parental consent wearing a medical device all day? The board isn't a legislative or an executive branch. The RSAs have wording regarding health and safety, but not individual medical choices. So if masks are optional, a student falls ill, or ultimately unfortunately dies, you'd feel bad about it, correct? You might think maybe some legal action might be brought against you. Well, unfortunately, you can't pinpoint when somebody catches a virus, where they caught it, home, extracurricular activities, something like that. However, what we do know is that if you keep mask mandatory in place, and long-term studies show that there are negative effects of that, we know exactly where they wore them, here with you guys, for six to seven hours a day. That's going to be on you. From perspective, there's 730 million children in the US ages zero to 17, and in the flu season of 2018 to 2019, roughly 450 died. Since the beginning of COVID, roughly 340 have died. Why no calls for masks back then in the flu season? Okay. I'd look to you and say, if we're doing this outside of a legislative or an executive branch, because the governor and legislature haven't done anything with this, it's you guys as a board, you better have a mountain of evidence behind you that shows wearing a mask for six hours a day is better than not, because I can guarantee you that if something ensues, legal action or something, even some of the pro-maskers are going to jump onto that. The mask, the only, the only mask that worked is the N95. We all know it. You need a health screening every year to wear it. You have to be clean-shaven to wear it. I've been fitted for one multiple times. I have to shave this every time. You have to put the right mask on, you put a hood on, you get sprayed with Bitrix, and you have to do movements with your mask. And you break in the mask, doesn't work. Every mask here does not work. Without the hierarchy of hazard controls in place, it doesn't matter anyway. If you're not filtering out the air, if you're not replacing the air, if everything's still contaminated, the second you take your mask off, it's all done. Doesn't matter at that point. Case count. Whose case count are we considering? 31,000, 34,000 residents of Derry or the 3,000 students that go here? PCR test, right? Everybody know what a PCR test is? You've all done your own research. I know we have some chemists on the board, and a degree in chemistry as well, and a pharmacist on the board. Right? It's hard for me to say. Polymers chain reactions, it utilizes thermal amplification cycling to make millions to billions of copies of a molecule. Somewhat correct? Okay. It's exponential in measurement for each cycle. Carey Mullis invented it in 1983, and later won a Nobel Prize for it in 1993. He's also on record as stating, "With the PCR, if you do it well enough, you can find almost anything and anybody. It doesn't tell you if you're sick." That's a quote. This is corroborated by a study published in the Oxford University Press. It states that 35 amplification cycles, 97% of positive cases are non-clinical, because the virus is dead. The CDC ran its cycles at 40. That's 32 times higher than the 35 cycles, because it's magnified exponentially. Again, there's people on the board that can probably corroborate that.
So, your time is, your three minutes is up.
Okay, one last thing. By the end of the year, you're not going to be able to use PCR testing anymore, anyway. So the matrix that you use is bogus based on cases.
Hello. Erica Leon, 84 Sheneta Road. I actually can answer some of the questions that came up in the school board discussion earlier. Pickerton is not eligible for school building aid. That is only to districts who are doing construction. And as I sat in a bunch of those hearings, even if we had four times the building aid and they were eligible, it wouldn't rise to the top, and it wouldn't be funded. As far as the homeschool students not having to report and not having to unenroll, that actually would be against the RSAs and against the law. If a student is unenrolled unless there is a specific part underneath 193.1 to have a separate compulsory attendance, then that would not be something that is endorsed by the legislature, the commissioner of education, or the Board of Education. A student who is taking full-time V-Lax is a charter school student, and is enrolled as a public school student through charter school. And if you are taking homeschooling and taking less than full-time V-Lax, you are a homeschooled student. So if you're taking education freedom account money, you need to be declared underneath that compulsory attendance, which is its own method. Or if you are a self-funded homeschooler, you need to file a letter of intent, which you can do here at the district, with a private school, or with the Department of Education. I don't want families getting in legal trouble because they are just going with best guidelines. And I look forward to talking to Dr. Taylor tomorrow and figuring out what the misconception is, because I definitely don't want to see our families or our district getting into legal trouble. And right now, with that advice, we're walking a fine line. Also, as to the policy updates, with the student, with the student, I forgot exactly which one it was. Here we go. The student conduct, discipline, and due process. If a student is pulling down their mask too much throughout the class day, are they going to be sent to detention? Are they going to be sent to the principal's office? Are they going to be deprived extracurricular activities or sent into full-school suspension? Because this is a significant amplification of the code of conduct, and I'm curious about this, if this is in place in order to have a protocol for mask violations for students.
It's progressive. Probably the first thing would be the parent would be called, and it would be expected that rules would be followed, or discipline would be progressive. Yes.
So if a child is unable to wear it, whether they have a sensitivity-
No, no, no. Not if they're unable to wear it. They refuse, I thought you were saying they're refusing to wear it.
Well, there, there are children that have sensitivities, and-
Yeah, and we'd be aware of that, and we would have exemptions for that.
What I've been hearing from parents is that it hasn't been very welcoming to those, those individual sensitivities and individual needs.
We had people last year, all last year, that could not wear a mask for those reasons.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be different this year.
Okay. And I hope that that is clarified with people, because I know a lot of these students normally wouldn't rise to an IEP or a 504, but it still needs to be accommodated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Leon, 84 Sheneta Road. So, last school board meeting, I sat up here and I addressed the board and talked about consent, the importance of consent. I happened to mention Jonas Salk, who was a role model to me growing up, which I may not have mentioned. Someone on the board decided to poke fun at me at the end after I had made comments. So, I want to continue that discussion, because I think it's really important that we ask the board a couple of questions this evening. Reading from Dr. Salk's personal pages that he read at the White House on an invited visit, April 12, 1955, I'm going to read just the first and last sentences. "The medal is humbling. The man was incredibly accomplished. He brought in all of his team to receive credit, and at the same time, brought out that science usually fails. It's those shining lights that we're really lucky to see." So, he said, "At various times in our lives, we stop, look, and listen to see where we are, and sometimes think, not is it safe to go ahead, but rather, how did we get where we are at that moment? Where are we right now?" So the last sentence in here. "I say rather that on behalf of all the people in the laboratories, in the field, and those behind the lines, I gladly accept this recognition of what each of us has contributed, and I hope that we may have the opportunity to see again in our lifetime the beginning of the end of other fears that plague mankind." And right now, one of the things that plagues our kids are these masks. The board had no hesitation, one person did, voted against the mask mandates. Let me ask the board, how do these masks work? Do they protect me from you, or do they protect you from me? It's very important. They protect you from me? Put 'em on. Make it a choice. If it protects, if me wearing a mask protects you, I challenge you to show us a single scientific paper that substantiates your point. I don't mean the CDC recommendations, which actually, if you read the back of that, are old WHO recommendations. There are no studies to support that. They're expert recommendations. We were just following orders. That was basically the Nuremberg Defense. Please produce that data. And I'd also challenge the board to show what data you considered, not of the benefits. I mentioned one of my mentors, who always told me this, C. Everett Coop. Every drug comes with risks and benefits. Same is true for medical devices. You think there's a magical benefit? Please show it. I'd be happy to show you the risks that are posed to kids, including learning disabilities that happen as a result of mask mandates. It's been published, I'd be happy to share it with the board. I hope you consider science next time. Thank you.
Anybody who's interested, I can have some of the science published on the opposing side of it, that I'd like to share at some point.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I don't come here with any hard factual data. I thank God the parents behind me came with that. I come here to speak from my heart. I have two children, ages 11 and 9, that I adopted when they were five and four. They both have learning disabilities. They have thrived since they've been with me in the Derry Schools. I love, I can't say enough about DBS. The community there, the supports my boys have received have been top-notch. Throughout the summer, my children weren't required to wear masks, as most of us weren't. Life went on without masks in most occasions. The moment I walked into West Running Brook to bring my son for a tour, and I looked to the left of me, and there was a library full of teachers about one or two feet apart from one another, not a single one of them wearing masks. And the VP comes out to me and asks me, "Do you have a mask?" I said, "No, I don't." I asked him, "Is this going to be required?" He said, "I'm not sure. There's a meeting tonight." At that moment, I knew the decision, and at that moment, I said, "If it is required, unfortunately, my son will not be here." My sons have learning disabilities, they have anxiety, they have depression. They lost my husband this year due to a brain tumor. They've had multiple losses, and they need the support of their school. The thought of homeschooling them has been daunting and overwhelming, to say the least. Thank God I became familiar with Prenda, and I've found a micro pod. But I want to talk to the accommodations in terms of the medical exemption forms for mask-wearing, and I want to ask you if you think this is appropriate. For a child with a learning disability and anxiety to have an exemption from their medical doctor, for the accommodations to be to sit six feet apart away from their peers, to wear a plastic shield on their face, is a reasonable accommodation? In my non-medical opinion, I don't believe that's reasonable. Quite honestly, I feel it's disgusting, and I've had school personnel tell me, "That is no reasonable accommodation," and then went on to give me some alternatives. I'm here with the other parents that have spoken, and those that haven't, to simply review, review the information that has been presented here this evening, to look at our children and what they've gone through. They have suffered the most, and they are not the super-spreaders. They are not the transmitters. Please, I ask you, for the sake of our children, to consider, to consider, to reconsider the decision. Thank you.
Elizabeth LaFosse, Trent Road, here in Derry. I am not looking for an answer from the board this evening. I'm actually looking for a motion. The information that Darlene is trying to present here tonight, granted she asked a question from you in the beginning, it's very, it's very important to many of us sitting here tonight, that you individually read what she has, hear what she wants to try to explain to all of you, because she speaks for me. She speaks for a lot of us out here. Her tears are my tears. For every, for every one mom that is in this room crying to you, pleading with you to hear our options for masking, we are at home in bed at night crying to our husbands, worrying that we are failing our children, because no one hears us. The information that Darlene has, that she did not get to finish to present, I would like to hear a motion from someone here tonight to let her finish. It's CDC statistics. It's very important to us. I'm imploring you this evening, I'm not here to point fingers at anyone, I'm not calling anybody names. I want Darlene's information heard, please enter the record. It's very important, for my family, for her family, for our children. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
If you guys wouldn't mind, I'd really like to finish.
You can come up and have three, and finish.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. I do appreciate it. To pick up where I left off, brain circuits are especially vulnerable as they're developing during early childhood. Toxic stress can disrupt the development of these circuits. This can cause an individual to develop a low threshold for stress, thereby becoming overly reactive to adverse experiences throughout the rest of their lives. And this is talking from early childhood, which are our young, our children. High levels of stress hormones, including cortisol, can suppress the body's immune response, so therefore, we are suppressing their immune systems. This can leave an individual vulnerable to a variety of infections and chronic health problems. Sustained high levels of cortisol can damage the hippocampus, an area of the brain responsible for learning and memory. So we're trying to promote a healthy, safe learning environment, yet we may be damaging their ability to learn and remember. These cognitive defects can continue well into adulthood. Research findings demonstrate that children, childhood stress can impact adult health. And without reading you this whole article, ACE is an adverse childhood event, and there's a study, and the results of that study show that the short and long-term outcomes of adverse childhood events include a multitude of health and behavioral problems. And they put them at risk for the following health outcomes, and the more adverse childhood events they experience, the higher incidence rate of such that are listed here, and these are just a number of them. Alcoholism and alcohol abuse, COPD, depression, fetal death, illicit drug use, ischemic heart disease, liver disease, risk for intimate partner violence, multiple sexual partners, sexually transmitted diseases, smoking, suicide attempts. I'd be heartbroken if any of our kids in this town suffered such mental distress that they would commit suicide. It would kill me, even if they weren't my kid. Unintended pregnancies. They are also related to risky health behaviors in childhood and adolescence, including pregnancies, suicide attempt, early initiation of smoking, sexual activity, and illicit drug use. And if you wouldn't mind, I just, because so many that are pro-mask, I'm very respectful of every side of it. Okay? I come from a neutral point. I have patients who are compromised, and I respect the need for masking to protect those individuals. And I respect everybody's choice if they need masking for themselves. I'm just asking for people to consider the science on the other half of it. So I have a study here that offers us some information about the effects of wearing face masks on the carbon dioxide concentration in the breathing zone. So I'm going to only bring you a couple blurbs of it. There is a chart in here that provides quite a visual without...
Can you just wrap it up a bit? Your, your time is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. You said I could come up and finish.
For another three minutes. Your three minutes is almost...
Okay, can I just read you one blurb of it with just showing you this?
One blurb, yes.
So there's, there's a graph here, and this baseline is our, so this squiggle here, this is the baseline CO2 without a mask on. And these are, the only activity studied was sitting at a computer, a light walk, and a brisk walk. So no including PE class, more physical exertion. And I will tell you that the CO2 levels inside these masks rose more than five times the amount of baseline. And consistently, a 2% to 3%, which would have given you a 20,000 to 30,000 parts per million. And they are known to produce sweating, headache, and dyspnea. And this article actually encourages wearing face masks only when strictly necessary to try to reduce the undesirable side effects that CO2 accumulation inside the masks can have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if the individual will steer that from me. It doesn't affect asthma, but I have the study too on how CO2 affects...
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken tonight that would like to?
My daughter has asthma.
Darling, can I ask you to cite the study so that we can review it? That you just, can you cite the study that you just talked about?
I'd be happy to, and I can send it to your email.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before Erica Leon comes up a second time? You can come up.
Thank you very much. I just ran out of time the first time I was here. I do have a recommendation about how to accommodate this. We have so many students that are overflowing to different schools. I wonder if the school board would consider setting up some mask-optional classrooms so that there could be some mask-optional classes and these students can still participate in our public school system. It might be a compromise where there are teachers who are comfortable with it and they can work together in order to have our children benefit from our strong school system. So I wanted to present that to you as a potential option. So, thank you.
So I would just like to thank all of you who came out tonight and spoke politely and shared your opinions and your concerns. I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your concern for your children. I have children. I feel the same thing. This is a heated topic. We are listening to you. But we are also listening to the many parents who email us on the other side who say it's very important to them that there are masks to protect their children. So there's multiple voices we're listening to, and we've considered them all. So I just want everyone to know that we are listening and that you are always free to come to these meetings to share your concerns and your thoughts, and we will always be here to listen. With that, I will close delegations and individuals and move on to other business. Do any members of the board have other business? If not, I would welcome a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second. Give it Derek.
First by Jessica and a second by Derek. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.